All right. Good evening, citizens of City Council. I'll call the January sixteenth meeting of the West Richland City Council to order. Before we call the roll, I'll ask Stephanie to read our hybrid meeting ground rules and then call the roll.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit comments to three minutes.
Right. Roll call. Trent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
May Hayes.
Here.
Fran.
Present.
John Smart.
Here.
And Stoker.
Here.
Councilmember Fettow, will you lead us in pledge allegiance this evening?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Fettow. Appreciate that. Council, the agenda before you this evening, Mayor Pro Tim, however, has requested item six oh, resolution oh eight twenty four updating West Richland Personnel Policies. Moving that to the regular agenda, so we will move that to item eight E. Are there any other changes this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as amended. Beggin'.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Close like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Council. We do not have any presentations this evening, so that moves us to the consent agenda, which is considered basic business for the city council. Taken by one motion and vote. And the consent agenda this evening consists of payment of the bills. Proven the minutes of the regular meeting December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Resolution oh one twenty-four amending master fee schedule, performance bond fees. Resolution oh two twenty-four surplus public works engineering and parks and police. Resolution oh three twenty-four setting a public hearing date to consider a petition for a frontage wa- frontage improvement waiver for seven eighty-six South Fortieth Avenue. Resolution oh four twenty-four authorizing the mayor to execute agreement regarding revision to cooperative, excuse me, corporate boundary with Benton County. Resolution oh five twenty-four approving the naming of Alexander Park. Ordinance oh one twenty-four revising the corporate bounty of West Richland to include a portion of Webster Avenue Road right away. Motion to accept well number three replacement project phase one as complete. Motion to award water main replacements on Shalane and Arlington at project. Motion to amend engineering services contract with J U B for well number two replacement project. Motion to amend engineering services contract with geo engineers for well number three replacement project. Motion to accept well number two replacement project phase one as complete. Motion to accept S R two twenty-four Van Geeson Improvement Project Phase Two for the water and sewer as complete. There's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please leave your comments to three minutes. I see no one in house. Is there anybody virtually who'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? If so, raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone to be recognized by the clerk. She will unmute you and have three minutes to address on the consent agenda. Stephanie, I don't, I do not see anyone. Do you from virtual land?
I do not.
Good. With that, council, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Beggin'.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Council. And now we'll move on to our first opportunity for citizen public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. If you would like to provide comment to the council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And a reminder that conversation back and forth, questions of any sort between council and the individual making comment this evening is not something that we'll discuss. Later on, you can discuss items that are on the agenda if you choose to on our second public comment session. So with that, and we'll start with anybody in house who'd like to address council this evening. Please come to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Karen Brun, and you want my address, physical address, correct? One zero five five zero six East Triple with two Ps, Vista Drive, Kennewick, Washington. Kennewick, you saw that. You heard that, right? Okay. Since my name is Karen Brun, I'm the treasurer of Tri-Cities Cares, a local nonprofit formed to oppose the Horse Heaven Hills Wind and Solar Project and approved as an intervenor in adjudication hearings ended in, ending in September after less than fifty hours of testimony. At a special session on November twenty-ninth, F S A C, which I'm sure you've all heard of, discussed concerns about the wildlife, cultural, and visual impacts documented in the F E I S, the adjudication hearings and public comments by T C C, Benton County, the Yakima Nation, the Regional Chamber of Commerce, TRIDEC, Visit Tri-Cities, the Tri-City Association of Realtors, City Councils, Chambers, and Residents. At the December twentieth monthly meeting, the council directed its staff to develop a mitigation option, removing the most objectionable wind turbines, resulting in a fifty percent reduction in project scope. T C C has also submitted documentation asking for a further reduction to accommodate aerial firefighting. F S A C has scheduled a January twenty-fourth meeting at which they will discuss and possibly vote on a recommendation to the governor. Four options have been proposed. Option three, which removes all turbines identified as having three or more cumulative impacts, which are the red ones on the maps that I gave to you, plus all project components east of Straub Canyon, is the only one F S A C should consider, along with the additional aerial firefighting accommodation. Public comments can be submitted to comments at fsec.wat.gov through January twenty-first, although F S A C has not yet posted any documents detailing the four options. We are asking you to sign and send a letter to F S A C requesting that they make their decision and draft recommendation documents available immediately to allow the public adequate time to review and provide meaningful comments before the council takes final action. Once the final recommendation to the governor is publicly available, it will be need to be scrutinized to see whether it protects the Tri-Cities in an acceptable manner. We are asking you to direct your staff and legal counsel to study these documents, prepare comments and concerns about F S A C's recommendation and email or snail mail them to F S A C and the governor within two weeks following the January twenty-fourth meeting. We are also asking that you and your constituents sign a petition asking Governor Inslee to deny this project. The petition is available online through tri cities cares dot org, and I also have the paper copy with me, just the pink thing over on the table. Finally, Representative Stephanie Barnard has formally submitted new legislation, H V two one one seven, that will require F S A C and county and city governments to address aerial firefighting needs in the permitting process. State Senator Matt Benke has cosponsored the same bill in the Senate. Both bills are receiving bipartisan support. We request that you study the bill and send a letter or email supporting the legislation to Representative Barnard and Senator Benke and submit comments in writing to the legislature when hearings are held. Thank you.
Council, you do have some information there, and feel free to reach out to Tri-City Cares if you have any further questions. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to make comments this evening?
Nancy Aldrich, three four zero five, South Lake Drive, West Richland. I'm here to speak on the about, about this council. I sat on this council for twelve years. I've been on the planning commission for twenty-two years. And I believe that this council, several members of this council, forgotten who they were voted, how they were voted in, and why they were voted in, who they, who they are here to represent. And also, I'd like to remind several of your council members that you're on video, and there's a little button called C C, closed caption. So when I put things in a letter, I'm not misquoting you. I have the actual quote in the letter. Now, I'm going to speak to the text amendment, and it's not on the agenda. That was just it, a text amendment. I don't care if there's a pot stop here. It could go either way. But on November seventh, Mr. Bloom, you said that you wanted to put it to the vote of the people, and you didn't care how much it costs. But then December nineteenth, at the beginning, you said, don't necess- you said you support, put it on the ballot. But when it came time to vote, you voted no and said you prefer spending the money to put a lid lift on the ballot. And then you made a comment that voters are stupid. I'd like to remind you that those stupid people put you into office, and those stupid people can take you out. Mr. Smart, you made a comment on December nineteenth that said you don't necessarily trust the outcomes of elections, and I'm sure Brenda Chilton, the Benton County auditor whose office runs the elections, would love to hear that. She's very proud of the accuracy of her elec- of her process. And that also said you support the vote of the people, but if the, if the advisory vote went to a ballot, even if ninety percent voted yes, you would be voting no on it. Mr. Smart, who do you represent? Do you represent the thirty-six people that showed up, or do you represent all the citizens in West Richland? And if there was a ballot and ninety percent of the people voted yes, and you vote no on it, that tells me that you're not representing the people here in this, the people here in this city. I would recommend that this council take the A W C webinar Ethics One O One. I think it's needed. I think some people have been on the council too long and have forgotten why they're there and instead grandstand. Also, it's, except for the three of you, it's also become aware that the council, several members of council don't know what the planning commission has, what the process, what we do. And there's also another webinar through A W C on G M A Planning One O One. I would recommend you take it. Just because you've been here this long doesn't mean you know everything. You need to learn what's go, what goes on in the city and how it's run. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience this evening? And we'll reach out to the virtual land, either star nine or raise your virtual hand if you'd like to make comment this evening. I do not see anyone virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone. No.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to ordinance resolutions, motions, and public hearings. Item eight A and eight B are a public hearing and a resolution to approve a frontage waiver and frontage improvement waiver for the property of Van Geeson and S R two twenty-four Belmont Boulevard. We'll ask Public Works Director Roscoe Slade to present staff report. Stephen, Roscoe?
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, council, what you have before you is another frontage waiver improvement petition. This is one forty-five Belmont Boulevard, so it's the intersection of Belmont and Van Geeson. It'd be the southwest corner. That's a vacant five acre lot. The owner's petitioned back in November for a frontage waiver to both Van Geeson and Belmont Boulevard, associated with a planned, a pending short plat and a commercial building permit that's pending. Council on December fifth, twenty twenty-three adopted resolution seventy-nine twenty-three, setting a public hearing for tonight to hear the matter. The property has been posted. Notices went out to residents within six hundred feet of the property. And then the city clerk has posted in the three public places for the city. Before I get into the recommendation that, I will note, we did receive a public comment via email. So it came in from a Mr. Sword. It's included in your packet. I'll just, it's brief, so I'll read it. "To whom it may concern with regards to the request for a waiver for the frontage improvements on Van Geeson, Van Geeson and Belmont, I would urge that this request be denied. If the improvements are not made by the land as it's developed, then in all likelihood, they never will be. Or if they are, then the cost will be borne by the taxpayers of West Richland. The landowner benefits at our expense." And again, Mr. Sword at six oh one Belmont Boulevard, so that's included in your packet. I don't know if we received any other. Stephanie, I think that was the only one. So so this one's kind of a lo- lengthy staff report. We've had a number of frontage waivers along Van Geeson. And the reason we've, council has granted in the past is we've had the S R two two four Red Mountain descended improvements that will be constructing these frontage improvements along Van Geeson, basically from bombing range all the way past the raceway to the city limits. And so we've issued or councils approved these petitions in the past for frontage along Van Geeson, knowing that these improvements are fully funded at the state level and doing them piecemeal doesn't make sense. So you're going to see a very similar recommendation on this, that staff's recommending on the Van Geeson frontage that we do issue the frontage waiver for that. There is some conditions of that on Van Geeson. It's, it's lengthy. It has to do with access and how close it can be, the access points to, to the intersection of Belmont and Van Geeson. And, and talks about shared accesses and all that. This is the exact same language that was on this property when it was developed or subdivided originally. So we're continuing that language forward to make sure it's clear on future access points that we don't issue access points for building permits, but with a short plat that need to be shared. And that will kind of what the expectation is. Put it in writing to make it clear. In regards to Belmont, staff's recommending, it's kind of a mixed bag, so there's a little over three hundred foot of frontage there. And what we're saying is we'll grant a frontage improvement for all of it except two hundred and forty feet. So when we do the intersection of Belmont and S R two two four, we'll build about a hundred feet of Belmont when we do the roundabout there. And so it doesn't make sense to have the property owner do it now. It probably won't tie in exactly because the design's still in process. But the south two hundred and forty feet of frontage, we definitely want them to, to improve on Belmont. Or as Mr. Sword says, it won't get done, or if it gets done at a future time, it'll be at somebody else's expense. So what you have before you is, again, a recommendation on those two things. Council's aware that you can grant or deny these petitions, or you can approve them with conditions. And so the noted conditions, staff's recommending approval with conditions and then one slight denial on a portion of Belmont.
All right. Thank you, Roscoe. Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing for this agenda item at six seventeen. If you'd like to speak to this agenda item, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Provide your comments. I see no one in house, and so we'll move to virtual lands and raise your virtual hand or star nine if you would like to address council, or excuse me, make comment, public comment for this agenda item. I do not see anyone virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
I'll close the public hearing at six eighteen. And resolution oh six twenty-four roadway frontage improvement waiver for Van Geeson S R two twenty-four Belmont Boulevard, one forty-five Belmont Boulevard. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to pass resolution oh six twenty-four granting a frontage improvement waiver for the frontage improvements to Van Geeson State Route two two four and portions of Belmont Boulevard with conditions.
Second.
Second, any questions that weren't previously answered? Staff report. I see Councilman Bloom, you have your card up. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Slade, so the lot across the street, right now, the waiver is for frontage improvement on both sides of the street. Is that correct? Or would it be both sides of Belmont?
No, it's just on their side of Van Geeson and on their side of Belmont.
Okay, so the other, the other side hasn't been developed yet.
No, it's vacant property on the side of Belmont, and it hasn't been developed.
So this would be sort of like Paradise used to be in the old days.
In Paradise and currently what we see on Belmont. So as it's developed, you've got some multifamily a little further up the hill. They've done their frontage improvements. So as you see development, we'll be able to finish Belmont off down the hill to Van Geeson intersection.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smart?
Yes, thank you. And Roscoe, just another follow-up question. Well, first I want to kudos to Mr. Sword for being on top of this. I'm not sure if he's a neighbor or not, but they were great comments, but I think we've satisfied probably those in your, your report today. The, the portion that the property owner will need to make improvements on, on the Belmont portion, does that include a street light or not?
More, more than likely, yes. He'll have at least one street light to have to put in. It's just kind of how the spacing, as they get in design to meet our spacing. So it may be one and maybe two, depends on, on the spacing.
Okay. Okay, just was curious. That's a additional, I, I was just curious about the, I, I won't, I, I was curious about the expense of what it costs to do these improvements. Just in general, not specifically, but you don't have a number per, per hundred feet or something? Okay, that's fine. Don't want to put you on the spot. Should have asked you that before, but I'm good, and I'm totally satisfied with this request, so thank you.
Else? Seeing no one. All in favor say aye.
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 Close like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Council. Item eight C is a resolution authorizing a park impact fee mitigation agreement with the developer of Watermark. And again, Public Works Director Roscoe Slade presents staff reports evening.
Thank you, Mayor. So typically, council's seen transportation impact fee mitigation agreements. I think the last park one that's come to council was the Heights that was built in Heights of Red Mountain. So this has got a lot of moving parts and different things, so felt it needed a discussion at the full council on the regular rather than the consent. But in your packet, I do want to first note that Exhibit C was missing the fourth page in the engineer's estimate that's been added into it. The number was already included in the first three pages, but it provides additional detail of the civil engineering costs. So that's been added back into it. In your packet, you'll see the resolution and the agreement basically between the city and the developer of Watermark to basically develop, which you passed a resolution earlier on the consent, Alexander Park. It's the five acres where Belmont will curve around that last little piece, that gap we have in Belmont. It's along the frontage of that. We acquired it with a land swap a few years ago when we swapped some raceway property and we got some commercial property. This is the park land that we acquired. And in there, you've got an exhibit of a conceptual plan of what that park would look like. So that conceptual plan was developed with Director Menon Hall and the Community Development, our park supervisor, Jeremy Gwynn, and myself. And the developer brought in a consultant that, that specializes in park design. And so some of the things that we talked about was making sure the park is unique, that we don't want the same cookie cutter with the same toy and the same things. We stress the need for native plants and to limit the amount of grass. We shared our recent study with maintenance and level of service with the consultant, and so those things were all factored in to that conceptual design that's included in your packet. It's got a lot of detail on the amenities and things. That plan was shared with the park board to make sure that we were meeting their expectations in the park plan. And then from there, again, putting the agreement together and the engineer's estimate to make sure every, all three of those documents match up. That, that was a several month process. The other part of this is it's gone before the council park subcommittee, so that's Councilmember Stoker, Councilmember Moran, and Bloom. Okay, so I get to get, I know my utility committee really well, but and really to have a discussion with them because typically we do these type of agreements. They get credit towards it. This one, the park improvements are more than the credit. You know, to, we own the land, but there's a little over one point one million dollars to develop this park, and it's not just to serve the Watermark development, which is receiving six hundred and thirteen thousand dollar credit towards our park impact fees. It serves a lar- much larger area. And so when it's constructed, the city will be cutting the developer a check when that park is developed for the difference out of our one oh four park impact fee. The other thing is, we had the discussion last year about park maintenance, and so some of that's in the staff report to put council, let you know that it's another great park. We tried to limit maintenance responsibilities and, and different things, but it's going to need another body. And if you recall, the last study that we did last year said we needed seven just for our existing parks, and we budgeted for one and a half, so we're still a little short there. This will take us in the wrong direction. But again, it's the park, excuse me, follows the park plan. Again, try to full disclosure on it. So knowing that, a part of this agreement is pushing the development of that park out. So if you look in there, it's got a timeline that it doesn't get constructed with phase one. Phase one, they'll do the actual design, stub out water, stub out the power, those type of things. Get all the submittals approved. That's with phase one. Phase two of that development of Watermark is before that's finalized, they'll have to construct this park or November first of twenty twenty-six. And the purpose of that is that maintenance wouldn't be required from the city until twenty twenty-seven, which pushes it out a biennium. So when we're doing the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we can still work on the backlog of park maintenance before we add another park that's going to be needed in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight budget. So that was purposely done that way to push out the maintenance of a new park. It will be the only park in that, I guess, north of Paradise. So if you remember through the park plan, there was a lot of push to, to do that. The connectivity, this seemed like a logical thing. We've got that regional pathway that goes along Belmont that ties into it. So again, it all factors in. But what you've got before you, again, is an agreement with the developer to construct it in phases. He will receive credit to the development for the hundred ninety-eight lots in there. If they're all developed, all building permits are pulled in twenty twenty-four, then the park impact fee is fully mitigated. If for some reason the development slows down and, and five years from now, a building permits pulled, then there'll be, there'll be a small, whatever the impact fee is at that time minus what this credit will be. So there will be a balance due in building permits in the future if they're not all pulled in twenty twenty-four. There was one other thing. I had something else I was going to say with it. Lost my train of thought, but basically it's laid out. Oh, I know. We always get the thing, so the four hundred thousand out of the park impact fund. How does that impact other parks' plans or projects that were incorporated? Because when we did that, well, let me go back. When we did the Gateway Project, many of you were on council, and we transferred a whole bunch of money out of the one oh four fund to make up the difference of the Gateway Project. There wasn't much of a discussion of what, what projects got kicked, you know, where, what was that money slated for? So we were trying to be transparent with this. So we had planned in the next biennium to do the redevelopment of South Highlands Park. That's the one with the tennis courts and the deal was to redo that. Signing this agreement and that four hundred thousand kicks that project out a biennium. So you're now looking at twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The other project it impacts was Splash Park at the sports complex that kicks that out two bienniums. And with both of those projects, the South Highlands one needed a match of six hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. I don't think that's money's going to be available next biennium, so pushing that project out of bienniums probably not a a bad thing because I think council would have a hard time finding the six hundred thousand out of the general fund for that. The Splash Park, pushing that out two bienniums, it may only be one. You know. And what I say that is it all depends on the revenue. We'll have to watch it. The other part of that is it, it, there's a fifty percent match, so it takes an R C O grant for that project. So there's some other funding that needs to be secured. And again, I'll touch on the maintenance side of things. If you recall, on the park plan, that has an eighty thousand dollar a year maintenance price tag for the operation of a splash park that would have to be identified before that. So there's a lot of work. So those are the two projects that would be impacted by using this, executing this agreement to do Watermark Park. So I think I covered all ends. I tried to put it all in the staff report, so it's all. You know what this decision today does in the future, how it impacts.
Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate it. Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate it. And is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this agenda item this evening? If so, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments three minutes. I see no one in house. Anybody virtually like to speak to this agenda item this evening? Raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're on a phone. Be recognized. I see no one virtually Stephanie. Do you?
I do not.
Counsel, do I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt resolution 0724 authorizing the mayor to execute park impact impact fee mitigation agreement for the plat of watermark.
Again.
Second, council, are there any questions not previously answered from Roscoe? The staff report. I see Councilmember Fettow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roscoe, although I mean, we saw in the survey that citizens want parks and want open spaces, and this is fantastic. I'm not saying no to parks. What you bring up about maintenance? Now we can't do this, but is there a facility in which the city can mandate HOA fees to offset maintenance costs for future developments?
Yeah, we'll have to further discussion, but that's not been how you've set up the park system across the city. So having a public park that's open to the whole community, but a certain neighborhood only gets to maintain it, pay for it. I think you're going to get pushed back on it.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to think of, we can't keep up with maintenance now. And I did see this one doesn't minimal grass, if any, but a lot of structures have to be maintained. We can't. We can't maintain a basic level of service with what we have. This is require a lot more pricey updates and maintenance to this park with buildings and structures. Just trying to figure out for the future, is there something that we can do, we can look at? Especially with the developments can be happening across this down Van Geest end of the ranch. You know, that's 750 acres in the next 10 years. I'm assuming there's be multiple parks and open spaces. Just trying to think of other options on how we can maintain our parks. Like you said, now we've just kicked two projects on the road. Salaries for someone now to maintain this. Again, just trying to think of other ways to help offset that expense.
I'll go ahead and touch base a little bit on that and throw it back to Roscoe as this year we'll be working on the next biennial budget. And those would be great opportune times to start having these conversations in the workshop settings to address the issues that we we have at hand and and know that are there for the future as well. So I appreciate your comment and and certainly be taking note of it. Roscoe, do you have something else?
Yeah, I just can say the consultant did an excellent job taking in the cost of maintenance. And so some of the things that are incorporated in there are purposely done to be low maintenance as far as the play structure, having a up to date turf surface. So you're not having chips or pea gravel, the old style that has to be maintained. The the structure that there is a steel structure with I can't remember if it's a metal roof, but pretty low key. This has got some amenities that we think people are going to be there, but but in which we'll need a staying there longer than, you know, what do you do for restroom facility? Rather than try to put in a half a million dollar restroom facility. We've got a kind of Eric brought something from the city of Sumner where they put up a block wall and use a porta potty that they put. So the facility is there. It's not ideal, but it's I don't have to have a maintenance guy clean it and and dispose of it. And I don't have a half a million dollar bathroom building. So a lot of that was incorporated in for the long term maintenance. And then, like I said, native plants, limiting the amount of grass. I mean, there's still grass there along the Belmont frontage, but that was really taken into consideration. But I think the mayor hit it. We're going to have more workshop as we go through the budget. And council is going to need to make those tough decisions on what are you going to do with park maintenance? You already lowered the development level of service standard as far as and cut it in half as far as what developers are supposed to do for new parks. And if we can't figure out how to maintain them, then we need to maybe open up and look at what we're requiring as far as a level of service for new development. We'll need to look at revenue streams. Councils, you know, early this year, early this year, early last year, we talked about revenue streams, Levy Lidlifts, Park Metropolitan Park District, those type of things. Because parks are important to people. So it's going to be a lengthy discussion. And then the most popular one was and it was mentioned in the park plan. You've got a number of small parks that are underutilized or not used. Should those be closed? So you're going to have a tough decision to, you know, to make and and take additional public comments on it. But this is following what we currently have on the park plan and and just trying to be transparent of what it does as far as maintenance for future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yeah, Roscoe. Just total disclosure, the discussion we had in the Parks Committee, we didn't have appendix C. So I guess two questions. One, one is, is this the estimate for when? Is this today's estimate or is there an escalation in this estimate?
Thank you. So the engineer's estimate that was provided by the consultant was reviewed by our engineers and went back and forth to get, and it's in today's. Now it's escalated for building it for 2026. But there was some concern that in the last, I guess, last two years, it's been hard to estimate inflation. It's been pretty much all over the board. And so in this agreement, there is about, I can't remember if it's 65,000 a contingency.
Is seven, 7% contingency.
Yeah. So there is a contingency built in this because the project's delayed two years that as the Alexanders go forward and developing this park and submitting things, if the price changes what's in here, it gives staff some flexibility to cover the those overruns. At the end of the day, what you see is what we want to build, but we're going to stay within that. We're not going to exceed the base price with plus the contingency.
I mean, but but if if the cost of what so so are we are we agreeing to a certain construction cost or for the park as described? If if it goes over budget, are they going to come back and want to modify the agreement?
The the max is 470,000. The city, the the base is 400. And we will not exceed it. So if if the prices go crazy, we will work with the developer to look at changes and bring that back to council to stay within budget to meet the initial intent of the park. It's not a blank check. Or either the Alexander's pocketbook or the city's pocketbook.
Councilmember Smart.
Yes, thank you. So Roscoe, just a couple of comments. Generally, I like the the layout. I actually discerned that it was fairly economical for what we're getting. There's not a lot of grass area. I'm not sure that I can see that it would take an entire additional staff member to maintain it, but that's up for negotiation later. I would comment that a couple of things I just noticed and we don't need to get into this because this probably should be discussed offline as far as the design goes, but I just would mention that the gazebo is possibly in the way of viewing the the stage. I mean, I see there's grass area for people to sit in front of the gazebo between that and the stage. So there might be a possibility to move that off to the to the west or south a little bit. I was curious to know if the free of the I like the idea of the porta potty. It's not the greatest, but it doesn't have freeze problems in the wintertime. Does the drinking fountain, is it freeze proof? And what kind of maintenance will that take? And is the grass area in front of the stage, is that mowable? I see it's got these slopes and various terraces. And then the last thing, I was just curious if there was a plan for like a lockable electric outlet? If people want to have something on the event in the gazebo. Otherwise, it it looks great. I I can see that although there's lots of nice looking purple and orange bushes on the drawing that really the number of facilities that look like they need to be maintained or equipment is pretty minimal. So I appreciate the work that's gone into it.
Thank you for comments.
I can say some of the, I can't remember all of them, Councilmember Smart, but a lot of it has to deal with topography. So that stage area is way lower than the gazebo. The gazebo will actually be looking over it and it's terraced up to the so most of the improvements on this, the flat area up on top, everything drops. I want to say there's probably 40, 45 feet of of topography along that. So yeah, it's quite a bit and which makes it easy for native plants and rock on the stuff that's shown in orange. All that was factored into the view sites and 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 that kind of thing with the, like I said, I was pretty impressed with the consultant that the Alexanders hired. The best part is they listened and factored that into the conceptual plan in the park. And like I said, it met the park board.
Yeah, my last comment would just be to to make sure that the parking lot has stalls that are designed for the kinds of vehicles people in West Richland seem to drive. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Moran.
Thank you. This is more of just a general comment than question. I just want to say that I really enjoy seeing this type of this type of project. I'm really glad that we were able to have or not that we were. I'm glad that Alexander was working with this particular group. And I'm hoping that as it sounded like maybe in the future, we would be able to work with them because this design, I I love the way that it's incorporating a lot of the native plants. I I love being able to see the the hop sage, the the golden current, the rabbit brush, the sage brush, all of that. I'm really hoping that this thing where it says alternative to Russian sage isn't meaning that they are likely going to use Russian sage. But nitpicking at this point, I really appreciate the work that was put into this and yeah, looks good. Thank you.
Mayor Proten, break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Slade, I appreciate the time that you took talking with me today, addressing some of my concerns and questions. Just for the benefit of my fellow council members, my primary concern is the long term ability of our city to fund the maintenance and operation of this park and all the other parks we have. I see that is a serious concern. And Councilmember Fettow brought that up and it has been mentioned by the mayor that we need to have discussions about where the revenue revenue is going to come from. This is a beautiful park. Five acres. I think the design and the thought that went into it is outstanding. And the fact that it won't be built until 2026 after the majority, if not all of the houses are built as Director Slade explained, so that the park does not get covered with debris from construction. I'm nevertheless concerned about our ability because we'll take a staff member to maintain this park. I'm not debating that question at all. We are at a minimum standard right now for all of our parks. And so we need as council, the seven of us need to make some hard decisions as we prepare the budget for the next biennium as to what we are going to fund, where our priorities are and how we are going to manage the parks that our residents want. And I strongly support the parks, but we do need to come up with a long term plan in order to address the maintenance of these. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I yield back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Break. Councilmember Bloom.
Just one quick question. Will will the design of of Belmont allow for parking along Belmont in front of this? I mean, it it appears that this, you know, much like the other park, there's limited parking to get to it, but it was designed to support that particular neighborhood.
So Belmont Boulevard is limited access, so there is no parking on Belmont, and that's why you see a small parking lot. There's also a cul-de-sac on the north side of the that will allow for parking. But this is a neighborhood park, so you're supposed to walk and bike to it. But we did make some concessions knowing that's limited access and not parking along Belmont to allow for a small park. It's on our regional pathway network. So like I said, Belmont, the pathway that goes up from Keene cuts over, goes down Belmont, right along the front of this park. So it'll have great bike and pedestrian access and limited parking available for those that want to drive there.
Councilmember Smart, you.
So yeah, just one last comment about the funding of the park. I think what puts my mind at ease is the fact that it'll be developed in phases. The fact that this, if it is completed, everything fills out, there will be an additional 198 residences all paying taxes to our city. And by that time, hopefully also paying sales tax to all the businesses we'll have by then. So in my mind, the funding will come with the population. And this is the population that's coming right here. So if we don't have our percentages set right, we should adjust those, but I don't see. And I do see the opportunity for additional staff to to take care of the park. Don't get me wrong. I still don't know if it'll take one. Roscoe and I can debate that. But but I I just look at this and think that, well, if we get another 200 homes in, you know, we're going to get an additional boost in funding in our tax revenue. So that's the way it's supposed to work. So, you know, the talk of park districts and additional funding mechanisms. If we have our percentages set right and our and our funding and our our spending set right, when we incur new expenses because of new populations coming into our city, there should only mean to be able, there should, big quotes, only need to be minor adjustments. Because those people should be paying their way as they come in. And I know they do on on a lot of fronts, including utilities and the rest. So hopefully that's how we've got it set up. And that's, that's why I would just mention to council that let's keep that in mind as well. If we need adjustments, it might be need to be that we have deeper different, you know, adjustments in our baseline method of taxing people versus, you know, specific parks, district funds or something like that. But that's I just wanted to bring up the fact that we're getting another 200 residents. So that's, that's a big deal and hopefully that that will help sustain this expense. Thank you.
Follow up comment to Councilmember Smart. We do have to remember we have about a $3 million deficit in park maintenance already. So as we move forward, what you talked to is a good plan, but we've got to get, we've got to catch up to where we were. So
Agreed.
We've we've got conversations to be had as well. All right. So I see no other cards up. Council all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's like sign motion carries unanimous. Mr. Alexander is present with us this evening, and I'd just like to thank Mr. Alexander for everything that he's done for this city in the past. A great partner, not only for the city of West Richland, but also for the Richland School District. And it's a pleasure to work with you and your family, sir, and look forward to many more years of our partnership. So thank you very much, sir. Very good. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item eight B is an ordinance amending the West Richland Municipal Code related to performance bond requirements. We'll have our planner, Alicia Ransom, presenter staff reports this evening. Alicia.
Good evening. This is an amendment to Title 16 of the municipal code. It's primarily addressing performance bonds and how those are administered by the by the city staff. And but it's also updating a few minor things with how processes are being done with division of land as well as delivery methods of applications. The, again, the primary thing is performance bonds. Currently, the process is that the developer says that they would like to bond. There's an inspection done. They provide a list of all the items to be completed. City, the city provides that and then they generate an engineer's estimate. City and the applicant go back and forth about that. Then there's a security and improvement agreement drawn up. It goes to council. All of this is happening. It's approved by council and the mayor signs it. Some of the updates that we would like to make to that process as we found, as we've administered this in the past. I've been with the city for about three years and that's about the amount of time that the city's been doing, possibly a little bit longer, that they've really been seeing more of these. The current, there's some issues that we've been seeing as we've been processing these. And so the suggested improvements, first of all, the previous code had, it was just a paragraph and it said it was very vague on what was required and what was allowed and what was not allowed. This, the new code would specify what exactly they're required to do, what the city can do. Enforcement mechanisms. So the first thing would be requiring developers to provide a schedule for completing the improvements. So they have to say how long it's going to take them and this is how that's going to go. Obviously, they're going to be. Obviously, there are going to be delays possibly with that, and that is built into the allow, the extensions are allowed as part of the performance bond process. That's something that we've been doing previously, but with this, they'd be able to show that in good faith, they've been completing the improvements, and they need an extension for a specific purpose, rather than just, we need more time. Requiring a fee of 1% of the improvement cost, a minimum of $800, a maximum of $2,000, $2,500. The fee is intended to cover the cost of staff processing the performance bond, as well as time spent by staff in the field. Jaclyn Mokawahi and I, we sat down and we calculated the, just the administrative costs of our time, and that's, that's about, that's the minimum, $800. Anything beyond that would be any field time that would be brought into that, and we calculated how that was all going to work out, and that's how we arrived at the $800 minimum, $2,500 maximum. The, the developers would be required to record the security and improvement agreement with Benton County, so the agreement is attached to the property that, that is being subdivided, that will let the, any buyers know that the agreement is recorded on the property, and that there is a, there are bonded improvements associated with the, with the plat. Then it also outlines the process of transferring the agreement to another party. At the December meeting, there was one that they transferred the agreement from one party to another. We've done that, we've went through the process. Jessica was very helpful in figuring that out, as well as Stephanie. So now we have a process outlined in code, if the, with the ordinance that's proposed tonight, that would allow that transfer of development fee, and the, there'd be a $200 administrative fee charged with that. The, it also outlines the process for a partial release of the performance bond. We will, we would allow one partial release. We've had developers in the past where they wanted to do, okay, we've completed this portion, can we release this portion of the bond? And that creates more staff time use, that creates a lot of more administrative work. So, allowing one performance bond release, that's been helpful, especially with the Heights Park. They had it, and they bonded it with Phase 3, and they, when they bonded it, they were able to release the portion of the subdivision and hold the portion for the park, so they're able to loosen up some funds that they had, so they could keep working on the development. And then the, also outlines the process of when the performance bond can be released in full. Overall, it just provides more structure and more, more help for the city, for city staff as we administer, administer these to provide developers with more consistency. They understand what the rules are, they understand what they're supposed to be doing, and they also understand what city staff is supposed to be doing. Along with this, we have updates to current processes. We have a few requirements that have been updated, including altering the requirement that contour lines on plat maps extend 200 feet beyond the property line. This has been difficult for, for surveyors, as they're not always able to get permission from the surrounding property owners to get the contour, the topography readings from the surrounding properties. It's been reduced, proposed to be reduced to 50 feet beyond the property line, also requiring a title report for boundary line adjustments. We haven't required that in the past, but there's, there's need for one. We do know that the surveyors pull one for providing, for doing the survey, so we know that they pull one to do the project on the boundary line adjustments there. That provide, they, we just ask them to provide it to us, so we can review, make sure all the easements have been included. The outlining the short plat, final short plat process, we've been relying on the final plat process portion of our code. Now we've taken it and put it in the section on short plats, saying, yes, you are required to do a final short plat. This is the process for that. It's what we've been doing, and we just had some applicants ask, well, it's not really in the code, so putting it in the code to reduce issues with that, and then removing the maximum scale allowed for a plat map that doesn't really, doesn't really address that some scales are going to be different, depending on the area that's being subdivided. Maximum of 100 feet to the inch may not be the best scale for all plats. And then the last thing is modernizing delivery methods. When the code was written back in 2000, we were doing paper copies, and we put the burden on the applicant to provide all the paper copies that would need it, would be needed during the review. We don't need 17 paper copies, we don't need any paper copies, so we're just requiring them to submit digitally, and the way, hopefully the way that the code's been written, we'll, in 20 years, we'll all be back here and laugh at it, that, why did we think that this was going to be the right way to do this? But hopefully it won't be 20 years, but it, it's possible that we'll laugh at ourselves later when PDFs aren't a thing anymore. The, the text amendment was sent out to, for public comment, there was a SEPA associated with it, as well as Department of Commerce review, and the only comments that we received were from Kennewick Irrigation District. They had their own edits that they would like to make to the, to the proposed changes, well, to the entirety of Title 16. They specifically wanted language about irrigation infrastructure included, when it's already included in portions about infrastructure. We said that we wouldn't be incorporating everything. There were a couple of things that I, when I saw them, I was like, oh, that would be a good thing to bring into this. So they, some comments were incorporated, but the majority of them were not. The Planning Commission voted to recommend that city council approve the proposed text amendment at their December 14th meeting. Staff also recommends that city council approve the proposed text amendment.
Thank you, Alicia. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment to this agenda item this evening? If so, come to the podium. Guess we don't have to state our name and address, because I don't see anybody in house. So we'll roll out to the virtual round, and if you'd like to address, have any questions in regard to, not questions, excuse me, talk to this agenda item, please raise your hand, virtual hand, or star nine by phone. I do not see anybody virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
On, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve ordinance 0224, to approve the proposed text amendment, file number text 072023, to update the Title 16 Division of Lands to modify the performance bond process and to make additional proposed updates.
Second.
Motion and a second. Council, questions that haven't previously been addressed? And the staff report of Alicia and/or Eric. Councilmember Blue?
I'm going to piggyback on what I talked with Roscoe on the previous one. In the proposed bondage, it says 150% of the engineer's estimate, and the, I wasn't quite clear as to how we would come back with the date that estimate would be a valid of, I mean, 150% gives us a little buffer, you know, we've talked about inflation.
I'll ask, I'll ask Roscoe to go ahead and weigh in on this one, too.
Well.
This was a team effort, and Alicia, thank you very much for working with your peers and Public Works, and everybody wrapping their head around this, because it certainly has been some, some issues that have been arisen, and you've, you've filled all the holes. I appreciate that, so we'll, we'll throw it to Roscoe for that.
Yeah, so the 150% is because the developers give me a, his cost, but that, if he defaults under the performance bond, we go and do it. I can't do it for his cost, I've got prevailing wage, and so that's factored in. The other thing that Alicia kind of hit on is you're putting these bonds up, they're doing it, and they drag out, and so that's why it's important to get the schedule, so that we can factor that into the engineer's estimate. So if it's going to take them a year, we can factor that in the engineer's estimate, or we weren't getting that before, and we're relying on the 150%, or more importantly, we didn't have an issue yet with a developer not performing, where we had to go after the bond, but this corrects that, so we don't have that issue in the, in the future if a developer does not perform.
Oh, I mean, the, I, I was just wondering whether there need to be additional words to, to say we must agree to the, to the estimate, I mean, the engineer's estimate. You get my drift.
The city is developing the engineer's estimate, so they're providing documentation to us, but the engineer's estimate, we're reviewing and agreeing to. So, we have the final say on what the dollar amount is.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. I can't believe I didn't notice this earlier, but when you mentioned that the city of Kennewick had submitted something, I realized that the attachments, say again, of the Kennewick Irrigation District, apologies, but either way, the attachments, other than the draft ordinance, are not included in here. Must have been just because it was over 150, no, 184, no, 86 pages of a packet that I might have missed that, but I'm wondering if there's any way that we could get the attachments, just so that we could see them.
I, I can have those be sent out, yeah.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Brink.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Primarily, I just want to thank the work that you did, Ms. Ransom, that the work of your fellow community development members, and Mr. Minden Hall did, and so forth. It's been a quarter of a century since this was updated. I'm glad that it has, but I also want to recognize the work the Planning Commission did in trying to bring this forward as well. So, definitely a team effort, definitely worthwhile, so thank you very much. I will vote in favor of it.
Councilmember Smart?
Real quick, could you give us an idea of what the level of effort, what, what kind of efforts are needed to, staff efforts are needed for the 800 to $2,500 additional fee for these? What, what happens in staff to deal with these things?
So, it starts out, both myself and Jaclyn were involved with the upfront, okay, we would like to bond, here, here's the application, here, we're reviewing what they've submitted, and then we're processing that. There's a walkthrough that has to be done, if the project has, if they've already begun the improvements, so we're determining what's been done, what hasn't been done, and that's going to involve the inspectors, that's the, Will and either Ryan or Mike, there, Will's the head inspector, and then the other inspectors, one or the other will be present on site. Then there's, Jaclyn reviews the engineer's estimate, and goes back and forth with the, the applicant on that. The agreement is drafted, and I'm, I'm primarily drafting the agreement, but Jaclyn also reviews those, and then somebody from finance generates the invoice for the actual application fee to be paid, because that's when the, we have the engineer's estimate finalized, in order to prepare the staff report, to attend council, give the staff report presentation, all of that, that staff time, that doesn't include Stephanie's time of assembling, assembling the packets, that, so that part, and then another walkthrough, if they want to do a partial bond release, and then the administrative time for Jaclyn to prepare that release, and somebody in finance to actually release the check, and then if they want to do, you know, once they're finally done with the project, then that's a final walkthrough, final bond release. So it's a lot of people involved, it's a lot of, a lot of time commitment, so we want to make sure that this is being covered by the developer, rather than passed on to the taxpayer.
Excellent, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Great answer. Okay, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's like sign, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, thank you, Alicia, appreciate all the hard work, a lot, it'd be a lot better process. Okay, moving on to item 8E, is a resolution amending West Richland personnel policies related to bereavement, leave, training and education reimbursement, and office holiday hours. As mentioned, Mayor Pro Tim Brink had asked to pull this item off the consent agenda, so I'll go ahead and start with him, and then if, if Selena, who is our HR manager, is present this evening, if she has anything else she'd like to add, we'll go ahead and have her come up and make comment as well. So, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, the primary reason why I asked this to be pulled for the agenda is the revised policy as stated is this, regular employees may be granted time off with pay to attend the funeral of any friend or family member, up to a maximum of one working day. What I felt was missing was a time period in which, you know, how often can this be requested? Is this once a month, is this once a year? So I did communicate with Ms. Smathers regarding this, and I think the general consensus was that the staff's intent is to have this once a year. So I suggested change, and this is my proposal, that the wording read, regular employees may be granted time off with pay to attend the funeral of any friend or family member, up to a maximum of one working day per calendar year, adding those three words to the end. That's it.
Selena, is there anything you'd like to add to that? You, you tutored him quite well, so thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All righty, very good. Council, any, anybody else have any, let's, let's, before we, before we move on with that, we'll, we'll ask if there's anybody from the audience who'd like to speak to this agenda item this evening? And I see no one in house here. Do I see anyone virtually, star nine, or raise your virtual hand, who would like to address this item on the agenda this evening? I see none virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
That, may I have a motion, council?
Mr. Mayor, do you want the motion before we play with the words?
Motion, stack it, and we'll have a conversation, finish the words, and then.
I move to approve Resolution 0824, updating the West Richland Personnel Policy, Section 8.15, bereavement leave, 6.3, training and education reimbursement, and 8.13, holidays.
Second.
Okay, questions of Ms. Smathers, or conversations amongst yourselves, to the suggested change to the resolution? Councilmember Smart?
Sure, I'll go first. So, I, I understand the gist of this, and it seems like a kind thing to do. I'm a little bit perplexed as to the, the confusion about the definition of immediate family members. I understand, I think, what's being implied here as far as our, our new culture of who's a family member and who's not. That, that is still confusing to me, but I got it academically. I'm wondering if there's not a better way to define that. I, I don't know if thoughts were made about, is the person who's passing, have you ever been on their tax form, or are you now, ever, you know, are you, are you part of their IRS record? So, for example, if my parents were to pass, I was on their record for some time, that would definitely make me some sort of immediate family member. If one of my children, heaven forbid, or grandchild would pass, there would be some sort of, I don't know, maybe a biological or IRS attachment. So, that's one thing. That's just, I'm just curious to know if there's been thought put into other ways to define who's an immediate family member, as we've been working for several decades now, I presume. The, the second thing is, Mr. Brink, I understand your point, too, because my first thought was, well, how many friends' funerals, especially as we get older, and fortunately, do we get to go to, right? I mean, it's, it can be numerous, and so how many days off will that equate to? And part of me thinks, well, it shouldn't matter if they're close friends and you need to take a day off, and maybe you get that bereavement, or you have to spend a vacation day perhaps, right? Which is what most of us have to do. So, I, I think, but, but limiting it to one, you know, if only, if truly two, what I consider classical immediate family members pass away. you know, if only, if truly two, what I consider classical immediate family members pass away in a year, is that, is that what that was intended to be? Like only one funeral per year or just one of a friend?
Non-family.
One non-family member.
We actually started by changing the definition of immediate family member, and that got really hairy. Yeah, that was where we started. Um, and then that got so convoluted, we realized what our real point was, was that family has changed so much. Somebody should just be able to go to a funeral if that person meant something to them. So then that's when we came up with the singular line. Um, and it always does make sense to, um, put a cap on a policy like that. So starting out with one day per year is a perfectly good place to start and see how that does with employees. Uh, the whole point really was though, to open up the definition of family and let somebody go to a funeral on a bereavement leave type of thing, that maybe wasn't an immediate family member.
Yeah, okay, that's great. And I just didn't understand, I guess I misunderstood Councilmember Brink, the, the restriction of language for the friend part of it, not the.
Five days bereavement for, you know, mother, father, that type of thing.
Okay.
Um, so the, the immediate family member is a full bereavement that you would probably need to go and actually handle affairs for. But this is, you know, you have somebody close to you, there's the funeral, you can go to the funeral.
Okay, great. Very, thank you. I appreciate that. Straightening me out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Bloom.
I think Mr. Smart pointed out what, what I was, I was gonna get at, is he was looking at family and not realizing you're talking non-immediate.
Aunts, uncles, cousins, something like that.
So, so the one-year proposal, which I also.
Yes.
I, I also asked for this to be considered is applicable to the friend or non-immediate family.
Just the open, if you need to go, you need to go.
Paragraph says you get five days per year for immediate family members.
I see.
So, and so my, my question, because Dan, is maybe we want to put other family?
Yeah, we could, um, we could even take, take out family and just put friends, because really, that encompasses everybody else other than the immediate family in the previous paragraph.
Yeah, I, I'm afraid it would.
We could just strike the family line on that and just put friends. That pretty much opens it up.
Confusing. All right, so, so basically, Mr., Mr., uh, Brink, uh, what I'm suggesting is that sentence you came back saying, regular employees may be granted time off with pay to attend funerals of any friend up to a maximum of one working day once per year. So that we take, so we take the family out of it, because a distant family is a friend.
Yes, that's correct. Count, well, Councilmember Bloom, the preceding paragraph, which Ms. Mathers just spoke about, uh, I'm not considering or not proposing any changes to that.
No, no, but having family in that paragraph and then below the immediate family, that's where the confusion, Mr. Smart was seeing it twice.
I understand, yep.
So, so we're just going to take, or you put the word other family member.
Uh, which, whichever looks better on paper as people are reading it.
Other.
Non-immediate family member.
Okay.
But it's good.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Friend or non-immediate family member.
Yeah. So I, I have no problem. We're taking notes. If, if the clerk understands what we're going to approve. Okay, so should I amend my motion?
So there is a motion, uh, to approve the resolution as it was presented. So we would need to make a motion to amend the, um, resolution, uh, with the language that was suggested, and that would need to be voted on, and then the original motion would be voted on as amended, if that passes.
I move to, um, pose. I, I lost it. Someone else do it.
I'll do it. If, if that's all right. I move to amend the presented. Shoot, just lost my, the. I move to amend the presented bereavement leave documentation so that the second paragraph states, regular employees may be granted time off with pay to attend the funeral of any family, pardon, of any friend or non-immediate family member up to a maximum of one working day per calendar year.
I'll second.
Okay, got a second, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye to the amendment.
Aye.
I have a comment.
Pardon me? Any opposed then? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any, okay, anybody opposed? Same sign?
Pardon, uh, point of, point of order, trying to make sure. So we have voted on and approved the amendment to the bereavement leave at this point, correct? I still have a comment or rather question regarding the thing, and the overall and general motion. May I?
Heart is up, yes.
Yes, thank you. I, just a quick question regarding the first paragraph of that, just want to make sure. So that is for five calendar days for any number of time during the year, as long as it meets the immediate family members, correct?
It's just once per year.
So that is also once per year for the five working days? Okay, so then.
At least that is the way it has been implemented thus far in the history of the city. That is what we've done.
Okay, because it, it currently isn't stated that way, and I'm honestly fine with it being more than one per calendar year, because some years are worse than others.
We've ever had it happen more than once, but, um, that's really what we pretty much preached since I started.
Right, that's fair. Okay, so I just was curious, um, about that. Okay, thank you.
It's so.
Okay, now, now I got confused. So immediate family, we're limited to just one immediate family member per year? So if mom and dad die in ten years, I'm going to go to one of them?
Well, you get five days. You could do three for one and two for the other. No, five days total. For, um, three days for mom, two days for father.
If mom dies, and then three months later, my son dies, if I've used my five days for my mom.
It's vacation.
Okay.
Nope. We've amended, we've motioned, we've seconded, and we voted.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So now the, uh, vote would be on the resolution as amended, to include the language.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
I move to approve. Oops, I've lost it.
Still moved.
But the motion's already on the table.
All right.
And so now it's just a vote of the motion as amended.
Motion as amended, there we go. You guys all confused me too. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Appreciate that. Mayor Pro Tim Brink for making clarification. Alrighty, so with that, uh, we have no unfinished business or new business this evening. So this is the opportunity for our second public comment. If you'd like to make public comment to counsel, excuse me, yes, go to counsel, go ahead and, uh, come to the podium, state your name and the address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. All right, seeing no one in house here, we'll ask if there's anybody virtually who would like to address counsel this evening. Raise your virtual hand or star nine. You recognize? I see no one. Is, uh, Stephanie, do you see anybody else?
I do not.
We'll go ahead and move on to staff, council announcements, reports, comments, uh, staff, anybody have anything for us this evening? Seeing no one there, counsel. Councilmember Bloom's got his card up.
Uh, I would like to comment on the previous, uh, comment, public comment about voters being stupid. That was taken out of context. The previous part of that discussion was for uh, marijuana issue, there could be a lot of money put into advertising and swaying voters, uh, appeal. And so that's the context of that statement.
Member Smart?
Uh, yes, I feel compelled to briefly comment on, um, Ms. Aldridge's, uh, comments directed toward me earlier as well. Uh, first of all, I appreciate her comments, and I appreciate her courage to, uh, present those before council in our city. I honestly do appreciate that. I'll take them in reverse order. I just want to comment that, um, I, I believe I do know how the Planning Commission works. I've sat down in Planning Commission meetings for literally decades before I became a council member. However, I am totally open and would still suggest that we have a presentation by our planning director and perhaps the chairperson of the commission, or maybe the whole commission with the council to review how issues are brought before them, what their responsibilities are, uh, our options for responding to them, et cetera, right? So there's no, never any harm in reviewing procedures and making sure we all are as informed as we think we are, myself included. Okay, so that's, that's a good, that's a good comment, and I would encourage us to, um, act on that. Perhaps, uh, a special meeting or a, a small time, amount of time set aside at a workshop. I think that the other, uh, couple of comments about not trusting elections and if ninety percent of the population votes yes, I would still vote no on marijuana shops. That's absolutely true. Stand by both of those. Uh, the, um, Article four, section four of the United States Constitution indicates that we are a constitutional republic. We are not a democracy. One of the, um, uh, citizens stated very eloquently during that same meeting, I believe, where he suggested that if we were to have a vote on whether or not our police officers should hand out speeding tickets, uh, is that, that was that, Mr. Bloom? Uh, would, would it be? Do you think that everybody would vote to hand out speeding tickets? Well, some people who are in the know probably would vote for handing out speeding tickets, but the vast majority would probably say, no, I'm all for not ever getting another speeding ticket. And that's how democracies work. That's how, that's how public opinion can be swayed, and that's why we don't have a democracy. We have a republic. So that, so that public opinion doesn't shift the direction of our government in adverse ways based on advertisements like Mr. Bloom was mentioning, or big pots of money that work to convince people, uh, to go one way or the other. So that's, that's the context in which I will not vote for a pot shop, because no matter what our population is convinced to believe, uh, it's my responsibility as a representative of at least the fifteen or sixteen hundred people who voted to put me into office to, uh, study the issue, see all the parts of it, understand the hazards, and contrary to maybe the popular demand, guide our public and our citizenry toward the right conclusion. That's, of course, the conclusion that I've made, and it's not prejudgment. That is a judgment based on a lot of study, of which I plan to, um, present in short periods of time in the future council meetings. There is a plethora of information about marijuana, the psychiatric ills that it can take on and, uh, and cause people to have that is not related to the general public and usually. Uh, and that's the type of information that as representatives of, of our city, uh, we need to be made aware of and not just go with what we perceive to be popular demand. So I, um, stand by that, and that's the reason why. So, uh, if I, if I were to have studied this and found that there was no ill effect, and that was actually a huge benefit, my mind would be changed. But that's not the way to, so I appreciate her comments. They were a little bit taken out of context, but I hope that, I, I'm glad that she brought it up to give us a chance to, um, explain ourselves. And, uh, so that the council, the citizenry, who I'm happy to say get to see this on recorded, uh, uh, film and, and video, uh, can understand where I'm coming from there. So I encourage all of us to study the topics that we are asked to consider and then, uh, really vote on them honestly. And, and by the way, the reason I don't necessarily didn't support a, uh, taking this issue to a vote of the people is because of what I just said. It's, we can't take every decision to the vote of the people. Uh, what, what, what about, and I would propose that we start thinking about what happens when somebody comes and wants to put a strip club or a casino at the end of the street? Do we have those things figured out? And, and will popular demand cause us to, to approve those? Or will we use our best judgment as representatives of the people elected, duly elected to, to guide, to guide our city in the right direction? That's my comment. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my comments also are in kind of the same thread as Mr. Smart's. Um, I went back and listened to most of the, uh, recording from the last meeting. I am pleased to see Mr. Shoemaker make an appearance this evening. I transcribed your final comments from that meeting. Um, I've referred to them many times, and I have to say kudos to you, because in my opinion, you are a member of our citizenship who knows how it's supposed to be done. As Mr. Smart indicated, we are a constitutional republic. Democracies are mob rule. Might makes right based on numbers. Um, and our founding fathers disagreed with that, which is why we have the form of government we're supposed to be following. To quote James Madison here, I, I do have a few other quotes. Quote, "There is no maximum, in my opinion, which is more liable to miss, to be misapplied, and which therefore more needs elucidation than the current one, that the interest of the majority is the political standard of right and wrong." And so I too don't believe that, um, we can exclusively depend on a majority to tell us what is right and wrong. I believe as a representative, I was elected based on my principles, my values, my morals, to represent people, but not to be swayed necessarily unless I can be convinced otherwise. And I'm not saying I can't be convinced otherwise, that people can't tell me or educate me, but, um, I have my own standards, and that's what I will vote on. Another person that I have great respect for is a former, um, Secretary of Agriculture from the Eisenhower administration, um, Secretary Benson. He once in a speech says, seldom are men willing to oppose a popular program if they themselves wish to be popular, especially if they seek public office. Unlike the political opportunist, the true statesman values principle above popularity and works to create popularity for those political principles that are wise and just, end quote. And so that's one of the, my founding, uh, supports is that I aspire to be a true statesman, not a political opportunist. And so, um, what I said before in that, um, I campaigned against the pot shops, and therefore I will still stand on that. And so with that, I thank you from the time.
Rand?
Thank you. Um, now for something completely different. So, uh, first, I would like to say thank you to the street crew for the de-icing that was done. Those roads, I know that we didn't have much. I know that we were planning on getting hopefully not too much tonight and tomorrow, but I never bank on it, so I just want to give a shout out to the streets crew for what they did previously and what I know they're probably already doing. Um, so thank you for that, Roscoe. Please send your regards to the crew. Awesome job. Also, there is a Ben Franklin Council of Governments meeting that I'm going to be attending this Friday at ten AM. It is going to be a hybrid, so if you'd like more information, it is on their website. Also of note, something that, um, our Senator Benke is going to be at this Saturday as a Veterans Strategy Session in the Richland VFW post. So veterans, um, So veterans, um, if you'd like to go to the Richland VFW at the Uptown. Uh, that is going to be at nine AM this Saturday and it's going to be just a strategy session, trying to see what's going on for veterans in our area. What hopefully our elected officials can do. Um, I'm planning on being there at least briefly, more representing myself as a veteran than the city, but we'll be there. So wanted to make sure people were aware of that. Thank you.
Beto?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've already let the clerk know, but our next meeting, February sixth. At best case, I'll be virtual. I've got to, uh, travel to Spokane that day for a meeting. I'll be tra- transitioning back from Spokane. Just don't know if I'll have service and time to pull over and jump on my phone or not, but so you know, um, I may be online or depends on if I'm, have no signal or not.
Council member Stoker, so he's, he's a star on that one there. Got to hold that phone in the right position. Mayor Pro Tim Brink, sir, this evening. Floor is yours.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for those who have not noticed, our state legislature is in session. This year is a short session. But there are many bills that the legislature is considering, which will have a direct impact on our city and other cities across the state. Uh, one of them is House Bill twenty-two eleven. Gives legislative authority for cities to impose a, uh, public safety sales tax. Um, however, if counties already have that, uh, those cities are not included. However, there's a companion bill, uh, House Bill twenty-two thirty-one, which should allow cities to devote one tenth of one percent of a sales tax to be devoted toward public safety. And that would be credited against any county or state sales tax that is imposed. So those are two things that are potential funding revenues for our two hundred and, most of the two hundred and eighty-one cities and towns in our state. I had the privilege of sitting down with the governor on Friday, uh, as a group of about ten people from AWC. Uh, the governor has an additional ten million dollars that he is going to set aside for public safety. Um, myself, the mayor of Woodenville, Mayor Millman and the mayor of Kent, Mayor Ralph, we all made very strong arguments as how public safety in this state is underfunded. And that does not include just law enforcement, that includes the entire process dealing with public safety. Um, mental health, intervention, treatment and so forth. Um, Washington did have twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, one point seven police officers for every thousand. Right now, the state average is down to one point three. And if I'm not mistaken, our city is below that at about one point two. Is that correct, chief? Yep. So I made that argument with the governor. I think it was well received. Um, it is hopeful that, uh, some of this money will be devoted directly to, uh, cities and counties to boost public safety because as our city grows, uh, we're going to need more public safety resources. And we can't expect the citizens to fund everything. We have to expect all the money that we pay in state taxes and county assessments to be diverted back to us so that we actually receive some of that revenue as well. So I encourage my fellow council members, follow some of these bills. It is a short session, but I'll tell you, things are moving fast. I sat in on some of the discussion today. Lot of people testifying, most in favor of public safety enhancements, but there are those that are opposed. And, uh, so I invite you, if you want more information, I'll help you, uh, provide that to you, but, uh, it's a short session, but they are moving at lightning speed. And I'll be over in Olympia in February as part of City Action Days. I think council member Moran will be there as well. So we will both continue to advocate on the part of the city of West Richland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. John, did you have?
Yeah, just a quick, uh, I wanted to also thank, um, Ms. Brun and the Tri-Cities cares for her presentation and the map. The map is fantastic. I'm sorry to say I haven't seen it before. No, 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 it's great. And I'm also, um, educated to see that there are six hundred and seventy-one foot diameter turbines. Hi, that's the height. Yeah, that's amazing. So anyway, thank you for the map and thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I certainly encourage anybody that wants some more information, uh, she can provide some statistics that'll actually stagger you. It's, it's quite, uh, and they've done, and they've done a great job too for, you know, all the, all the avenues that they are trying to exercise to, uh, uh, you know, make sure that we protect our citizens and the communities, uh, is much appreciated. It's not done yet, but the fight's still being had, so, uh, do reach out to her. She's wealth of information. I appreciate that. We don't have, we do not have an executive session this evening, so with that, we will go ahead and conclude our council meeting at seven thirty-five. Thank you, counsel.